Good evening, I'd like to bring this meeting to order. If you could rise, Ramona Solitz, followed by the pledge, thanks.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent, you have some introductions to make.
First of all, I want to welcome all of you this evening, especially all of our Region One High Impact teachers. We're so thrilled to be able to honor you this evening. Also joining us is Bailey Stevens, our student representative from Umatilla High School. Bailey is an 11th grade student at Umatilla High. She is a member of the National Honor Society, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, Avid Club, Key Club, and the Principal's Cabinet, and a recent inductee to the Advanced Placement Academy at Umatilla High. She participates in the Youth and Praise Team, she sings, plays the piano, and the keyboard. She was Teen Miss Umatilla during her 8th grade year, and she is currently deciding on a major for college and is sure that it will be in an area that will allow her to continue to serve others. So, welcome to Bailey. We'll look forward to hearing from you in just a few moments. Also joining us this evening is Rookie Teacher of the Year finalist Courtney Stokes from Taveri's High School. So Courtney teaches science at Taveri's High and has been teaching for two years. She is creating a culture of curiosity in her classroom. In her application packet, she said that she is inspired when her students have used something from her lessons to relate to their lives outside of her classroom. She says, "Moments when a student returns to class with more information about a topic to teach the class or a news article relating to a subject we've discussed shows me that I can foster curiosity about the world around them that will serve students well in life." So congratulations and welcome to you.
Great. Are there any changes, additions, deletions to the agenda? I have two items that I'm going to pull because of public comment, 8.05 and 8.06. Are there others? Mm-hmm.
8.0, you just pulled 8.06?
Yes. All right, we are at the approval of the minutes. Superintendent?
Recommend approval of the minutes from the regular school board meeting, March 12th, 2018.
Second.
Give the second to Mr. Gamble. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Great. Okay, we are at our representation. At this time, I'd like to invite Don Marks up to do some recognition for some student essay winners, and the superintendent, if you would join me down there, that'd be great.
Here. Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity and supporting the essay contest that we've been doing for the last seven, eight years. You know, the students hear their parents talk about politicians, hear them talk about government doesn't run the way it's supposed to run, or the way we'd like it to run, and the purpose of this essay contest is to take students to Tallahassee, give them the opportunity to meet our elected officials, and show them that they are people, just like you and I. We have been doing this, when we started in Miami, twenty-some-odd years ago, we used the same two questions, and they're just as relative, I believe, today as they were when we started this. There seems to be apathy among youth as far as political involvement. Given the opportunity, what would you do to change that? And two, my personal favorite is should politicians be held to a higher ethical standard than you and I? Each year, the students give the essays, we have people evaluating it from the Daily Commercial, The United Way, and a chamber in Miami, and they rank the students to show, in fact, how they can best explain or give their thoughts, as I'm having trouble doing right now. But we went up on February, I believe it was 6th and 7th, we met at 6:30, dashed off to Tallahassee, were able to see the Florida State Band on the Plaza, and then we dashed, and we ran and ran and ran and ran. As you can see, we saw each of our senators, each of our representatives, we went to a lobby office, we went to lunch, we went to dinner. All of this was done through fundraising, so as you get re-elected, any money that you have left over, we would be more than willing to accept it into the education foundation, and that's how we pay it. At this point, I would like to call up our students and have both our superintendent and our chair present plaques, so Ava, would you please come up? Ava Bixby? Second, Shelby Mulholland. And he had a real tough time. He was the only male among three other, or three females. Carson, please come on up. And the last one, and she says, if you look at the pictures up there, she has the same dress that she had on that, honest, she has changed it since then. So, would you please come on up, Riley? The neatest thing is that they got to sit for whatever time the legislators would allow us, and sometimes we had to dash to get there, and they gave us enough time to take a picture. Others chatted and liked to hear themselves talk, and I won't say who did or who didn't, but they gave them the opportunity to meet and understand that they are people, just like you and I, and they're giving their time to serve in Tallahassee. So... Okay. Well, with that, we're going to take the picture, and I don't need to say anything more. These are future leaders, and thank them for...
Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Weiskopf up. She's got some very, very special guests here with us this evening to recognize.
Good evening. I'm honored to have the privilege tonight to recognize some of our amazing teachers. I'm also going to ask Rob Felton, or the Regional Executive Director of Region One, to come join me at this time, to help me with this honor. The Florida Department of Education has identified 97 teachers from Lake County Schools, and I think that in itself requires a round of applause. As being those with the highest impact on student learning in the state. This determination was made after an analysis of their former students' performance on statewide standardized assessments. It looked at three years of data, from 2014 to 2017, in the subjects of English Language Arts, grades four to 10, math, grades four to eight, and Algebra I, grades eight and nine. Whether in a classroom where students arrived already high-achieving, or a classroom where students were underperforming, the efforts of these teachers provided inspiration and opportunities to students that may have been otherwise inaccessible. Today, we shine the spotlight on the high-impact teachers from Region One. So as your name is called, please come to the front to receive a certificate and a recognition pin that says "High-Impact Teacher, Lake County Schools," as our way of saying thank you for your leadership and for preparing our students for a promising future. Once all the names are called, our board members would like to shake your hand, and then we ask that you follow Sherri Owens into the rotunda to have your picture taken. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor to present to you the Lake County High-Impact Teachers from Region One. From Eustace Elementary, Renee Isabel. Eustace Heights Elementary, Jennifer Cavallaro. Eustace High, Stephanie Steele. Eustace Middle, Rebecca Hoover. And Bradley St. Pierre. Mount Dora High, Brian Farwell. Mary Ellen Griffith. Peggy Ryder. I think we do have Laura Rembert here. From Mount Dora Middle, Kim Jorgensen. And Kathy Keefe. From Round Lake Charter, Eleanor Garcia. Catherine Matarazzo. Elizabeth Mathulia. Shanna Nealan. Jennifer Parker. And Letitia Sanders. From Seminole Springs Elementary, we have Lauren Long. And Lisa Reese. Spring Creek Charter, we have Nancy Glass. And Juliet Lawton. From Triangle Elementary, we have DJ Ingram. Delia Loopy. Diana Nutter. And Rashonda Scott. From Umatilla Elementary, we have Wendy Lynn Clark. Jenna Jones. And Colleen Key. From Umatilla Middle, we have Patricia Williams. Patricia Williams, class. And from Altoona School, we have Mary Royer. And these are our high-impact teachers for Lake County from Region One. All right, so I do want the opportunity for you to be able to shake every board member's hand, so it's easy to just kind of form a line right through here and just kind of make your way, and then Sherri Owens would like a picture of everybody out of the rotunda, okay?
That's a tough act to follow. I believe we are at our public input for the evening, so at this time, I would like to call Mr. Tibbetts. You are up first this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Superintendent Carnegie, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss school safety with you this evening. In the midst of collecting survey results, debating whether or not to arm school personnel, and engaging in active killer awareness training, many questions remain regarding what can be done to protect our schoolchildren. As we await the results of these efforts and process the different avenues we can pursue, there is one thing that each person in this room can do right now. Fight against the private possession of assault weapons. The attacks on our schoolchildren, as well as those in other venues, with sheer a commonality that they were, for the most part, carried out with assault slash automatic weapons. What is an assault? It is defined as a violent attack. To possess a weapon specifically made to provide a person with the ability to violently attack others is not what was intended for our citizenry by the Second Amendment. That said, what do we do? Everyone here needs to take matters into their own hands. Every politician you know who supports ownership of such weapons, if they are a friend, unfriend them. And work for their defeat in the upcoming elections. When you engage in business transactions, ascertain the position of the businessmen and women with whom you are interacting regarding these weapons. Take your business elsewhere if they favor private citizens possessing these weapons of assault. The power of your purse strings is a powerful weapon. Don't stop there. Talk to employees, service club members, religious leaders, neighbors, fellow students, friends. Let it now be time to change our culture and our laws that we take away from these weapons of violent assault. We don't have to wait. Begin today to protect our children and teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tibbetts. Sarah Klaassen.
Lots of notes, sorry. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Sarah Klaassen, I'm here as a mother, a teacher, and a resident of Taveri's. I am also here on behalf of the Lake County Chapter of Moms Demand Action. We believe that sensible gun laws are the way to prevent another tragedy such as Parkland from happening. I have serious concerns about the possible adoption of the Guardian program and the arming of school personnel. As a teacher, I require sound, peer-reviewed research from my students. Just as I require thorough research from my students, I expect it from the leadership of our school system. There is no credible evidence that arming school personnel will prevent or stop an active shooter on campus. In fact, evidence shows quite the opposite, that the presence of a gun increases the risks posed to children. Both the American Federation of Teachers and the National Education Association, the two largest professional associations for educators, oppose allowing guns in schools. The National Association of School Resource Officers strongly opposes the proposal to arm teachers due to the risk it would pose to law enforcement, students, and the school community, as well as useless risk to arm teachers themselves. The President and Executive Director of the Major Cities Chief Association, which represents 75 police forces from large cities in the USA and Canada, both agree that arming teachers is not a good idea, and say, "The more guns that are coming into the equation, the more volatility and the more risk there is of somebody getting hurt." I have heard that arming teachers will stop active shooters during a school shooting, but arming civilians is not an effective way to stop active shooters. The FBI found, in 160 active shooter incidents, there was only one successful armed civilian intervention, and the civilian in that incident was a highly-trained US Marine. In contrast, unarmed civilians successfully intervened in over 20 incidents. Research casts significant doubt on the idea that civilians can shoot as well as trained police officers in active shooter situations, and research shows that trained, professional police officers have an 18% accuracy with shooting. What do we think a teacher or a school personnel, what is their accuracy going to be? Following the shooting of 12 police officers at a demonstration where dozens of open carry activists were present, then Dallas Police Chief David Brown said, "We don't know who the good guy is versus the bad guy when everyone starts shooting, and that's precisely the situation that we could create for our local law enforcement if we have armed personnel on campus." I, along with Moms Demand Action, and most of the general public, believe that the best way to protect American children in schools from shooting such as the incident in Parkland is to pass comprehensive gun safety laws." That's my time.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for speaking. If you'd like to know more, I would love to meet with you. Thank you.
Ms. Klaassen, you can also email the rest of your, I was going to say, speech presentation tonight to us as well. We'll have that. Thank you. Kelly, I'm going to pronounce this wrong. Staub. Okay. Thank you. Take your time, and you can come to this podium on the left side, too. You don't have to walk all the way across.
I'm not a very good public speaker. I'm Kelly Staub, the mom of three kids at Sorrento, and I'm super emotional. Okay. I'm sorry. The gun thing has me going. I am a carrier myself, but that's not what we're talking about today. I'm here to speak about weighted grades in our elementary-level students. It bothers me. I'm educated, I went four years for a master's in mass communications, and then I went on to nursing school when I didn't find anything I liked in that area. So I feel like the fundamentals are being missed in elementary level, and weighting grades on something that we haven't mastered is completely irrelevant. Like, for example, published products. These students are having to read a story, illustrate it, do the main idea, and touch all the basics of the story, capitalization, punctuation, spelling correctly, and then it's 50% of their weighted grade. So you could have a student who really has mastered some of these skills, spelling, grammar, adverbs, pronouns, nouns, and then they take this one score, and it's 50% of that whole grade. They could have 100s on everything, showing that they know what they're doing, and this one grade kills it for them. I know that because I'm experiencing it with my students. Another huge fallacy that I see going on right now is, in the six years that I have been in the elementary school, every single year, the blueprints for reading, language arts, and math have changed. I have three kids who have learned three different things, three different strategies. Math, my fourth grader's doing trigonometry. I don't even know if I ever did trigonometry in school. It's too much. Where do we draw the line? Where do we sit down as parents, as educators, teachers, and we really say, "Where do we draw the line here? How much is too much for these little people? How much is fair? How do we let the parents in so that we understand where we're going?" Am I making any sense? Am I all over the place? I told you I'm not good at public speaking. That's really, like, all I have. I don't know if you have a question for me, or what it is that I'm looking for. I'm disappointed, really, is what I'm getting at. I'm super disappointed in our school. Zuh. Not you guys, it's not personal. I just, I feel discouraged, my kids feel discouraged, my friends' kids feel discouraged, it's constantly a conversation, and I guess I just want to speak up. Like, if it's not talked about, how do we know? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Superintendent has said we'll follow up with you, too, Ms. Staub. Okay? All right, we are at the time in the evening we get to hear from our student representative from Umatilla High School this evening, so Ms. Stevens, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Board Chairman Stephanie Luke, thank you Superintendent Carnegie, and fellow board members. As you've stated, I am completing my junior year. Throughout the time that I have spent at Umatilla High School, I have had the opportunity to see the growth of many clubs and organizations, as well as the creation of a few newer ones, many of which I have had the privilege to be a part of. As you mentioned, I am a recently inductive member of the Advanced Placement Academy. Our interviews took place on March 28th. Personally, this was my first experience in both a formal interview and a panel interview. I am appreciative of having the opportunity to interview, however, both the situation and the questions asked pulled me quite far out of my comfort zone, as the focus was on myself and my own personal accomplishments and aspirations. All the questions required candidates to connect their personal abilities and talents to show how they could help both school needs and community needs. Questions also required everyone to reflect upon personal academic experiences, acknowledging certain challenges in specified areas, as well as dissect those issues to get to a root cause. While the interview experience was intimidating, it was also a good opportunity, because the questions asked made me stop and ponder the many discussion points. Our tapping took place this past Thursday in the courtyard with all Umatilla High School students witnessing the induction of new members. I was quite relieved to hear my name called as an inductee, and very honored to have been recognized in front of all my fellow peers for my academic performance throughout the years. After the induction ceremony, new inductees and current members were provided a celebratory luncheon. The formal induction will be held later on, prior to the ending of the school year. I am truly looking forward to this, as I hear it is a very special gathering that includes our family members. This was the third annual induction process for the Advanced Placement Academy. Our purpose on campus is to promote academic excellence through the taking and excelling in the most rigorous courses Umatilla High School has to offer. We desire to help others see that challenges are a positive thing and will lead to growth of some form. We serve as ambassadors at school events and community functions. The service project that we just kicked off is Bulldog's Read 2. This new program is made of academy students, principal's cabinet members, and avid students. At this point, we have 24 student leaders that have been paired with a willing underclassman during a common lunch period and have selected a book of mutual interest. We are reading this book together, hoping that our love of reading will spark a fire, or by demonstrating our reading techniques, we can help them grow as readers and sow the seeds we desire to plant. We want to also help develop relationships with these students, so that they know they have a student leader on campus that they can turn to when they need help or inspiration. As I said, this program involves a combination of student leaders from various groups, one being the principal's cabinet. This is my second year as a member of the principal's cabinet. This year, we have had the pleasure of having Herve Jones representatives attend one of our meetings. We recently held a 9th grade signing where a freshman class was exposed to eye-opening statistics regarding high school and college graduates' outcomes, and how these outcomes compared to those who elected not to finish school. They also got to hear about some of the tradition- They also got to hear about some of the traditions that precede the graduation ceremony, and then all sign a banner provided by HIRF-Jones pledging to stay in school and graduate. The culmination of the assembly was the traditional ringing of our victory bell. The principal's cabinet is looking forward to expanding our partnership with HIRF-Jones. In our next principal's cabinet meeting, we are going to preview the episodic series, Believe in You, which is designed to educate students about the incredible power of believing in yourself despite the challenges that may arise. The intent will be current and future cabinet members being able to take lead from the materials provided and build upon the concepts and principles behind the series, incorporating them into our own school culture. Another experience that I have had the privilege to be involved in as a member of the principal's cabinet was helping to design our event as part of the national movement on March 14th. As a group, we collectively decided that we wanted the time allotted to be a remembrance of those lives lost at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, and a celebration of the survivor's resilience. In our ceremony, Spanish Club members wrote the names of the deceased on the courtyard walkway, as another member read "Le Verde" by Paul Ullard, which goes, "On my school notebooks, on my desk, on the trees, on the sand, on the snow, I write your name. On all the pages red, on all the blank pages, stone, blood, paper, or ashes, I write your name. On the jungle, on the desert, on the bird's nest, on the thickets, on the echo of my childhood, I write your name." The volunteers from both cabinet and the academy called the names of the deceased from the podium as the victory bell was rung in honor of their life. Students had chosen Mr. Taughton, our avid teacher, to address the assembly and give words of inspiration. After this, I concluded the observant singing Amazing Grace, which was selected by representatives of our student body, and accompanied by Mr. Milford, one of our science teachers who plays the guitar. In the next board meeting, I will have an update on Bulldog's Read 2, our after-school entrepreneurship hosted by Mr. Page, news from our JROTC program and CTE department, high-Q news, our ACT, SAT, and PERT data, among many other exciting things that may happen between now and then. Thank you for this opportunity to share.
Thank you very much. Ms. Stokes from Taverries High School, Rookie Teacher of the Year finalist, we're really excited to have you here as well.
Thank you, Chairman Luke, Superintendent Carnegie, and board members for the opportunity to address you tonight. I have some interesting events that have been happening around Taverries High School that I would like to share with you. In my own classes, we recently had the opportunity, thanks to the Lake County Water Authority, to visit their facility, the nutrient reduction facility located on the Apaka-Beauclaire Canal, where our AP Environmental Science students were given the opportunity to observe firsthand how the facility cleans water leaving Lake Apaka and entering the Harris Chain of Lakes, where we all reap the benefits of that cleaner water. Also, we recently visited Kennedy Space Center with members of our astronomy club, of which I am the co-sponsor, and also some of our Earth-Space Science students, where they were able to have the opportunity to meet an astronaut and also view all of the exhibits at the space center. Our music department has been accomplishing great things. Recently, our jazz band, our Red Jazz Band, received straight superiors at state music performance assessment. I'm particularly proud of this result, because we have a first-year teacher as our new band director this year, and he and the students have really risen to the occasion, and they actually received the highest score awarded at their assessment site on the day that they performed. In addition, our musical theater department, also under the leadership of a new teacher at Taverries High School, is following up sold-out performances of their play Peter Pan and The Little Mermaid Junior Musical with a musical review Thursday, April 19th at 6:00 PM. In sports, we had, this past week, seven boys qualify for weightlifting at state. Of those boys, Christian Kilfoyle placed second place in the 119-pound division. Also, our track team is approaching district competition, and both boys' and girls' teams have broken several school records this year, so we're excited to see what they can accomplish at districts. Also, we have 29 competitors currently showing 41 exhibits at the Lake County Fair, and of those students that have competed so far, both of our Heifer exhibitors won blue ribbons, our Chicken exhibitors won blue and red ribbons, our Rabbit exhibitors won first and second-place senior showmanship, second-place skillathon, and best in two breeds. And last that I spoke to our agriculture teacher, the steers and pigs had yet to be exhibited, but we have high hopes for their results there as well. So we have many great things going on at Taverries High School, and thank you very much for the opportunity to allow me to share this tonight.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Forgot to mention, I know Ms. Stokes has her proud family in the audience as well, and I'm sure that Ms. Stevens does, as too, and I saw her principal and her assistant principal here, as well as her family, so we appreciate you guys coming out to support these people that make Lake County schools great. And obviously, from the student report this afternoon, you can see how that impacts our kids to the nth degree, so thank you guys very much. Ms. Carmen Colenbatt, the Education Foundation?
Thank you, Chairman, School Board, Superintendent. I had the honor of attending the School Foundation National Conference in Nashville over spring break as a representative from the state of Florida, and served on the Leadership Advisory Council. And while it was an incredible learning experience, I have to say, Florida rocks. We are the most affiliated and cajoing state in the nation, and we are looked to as a leader as far as education foundations go. The Education Foundation has $60,000 in the seven scholarships that we manage, and we're in the process of selecting the students that will be awarded the scholarships at the end of the 2018 school year. We also participated in the Amazing Race. There are 10 charities that are selected to receive the benefits from the Amazing Race, and the Education Foundation was selected as one of the primary ones, which means we'll be getting somewhere in the neighborhood of $5,000, $6,000, $7,000. But we had a lot of fun, and hopefully, there were no funders that were squirted down with hoes and water guns while they were blindfolded going through the wheelchair maze. But it was a lot of fun, and we enjoyed it. Apple Mart has had 564 teachers visit the stores, and we've distributed $42,300 in supplies here today. We are the recipient of the Dollar Tree Cares Collection, which started in all stores in Lake County on March 17th. Historically, we get about 12 to 15 boxes of hygiene products, and we are working with Student Services to get those picked up, and Student Services will be distributing those based on need. The AMSCOT Just a Dollar Campaign has concluded, and in Lake County, we are receiving $3,200. Statewide, they raised $185,000 this year. We will be honoring School-Related Employees of the Year and Volunteers of the Year at Night of Stars on Wednesday, April 18th at the college. The three finalists for School-Related included James Finley from Taverries Middle School, Michelle Rosenbaum from Transportation, and Maritza Matos from Treadway. And we also have selected the Youth Volunteer of the Year, who is Ariel Torres from Grassley Lake, the Adult Maggie Krieger from Claremont Middle, and the Senior Carol Koloski from Mineola Charter. And one of those three will be named the overall Volunteer of the Year for Lake County Schools. On Thursday, the 19th, we're going to be back at the college for the passing of the Torch Take Stock in Children Celebration. We have 45 inductees into the Take Stock in Children class of 2022, and 51 Take Stock in Children scholars in the class of 2018 that we'll be honoring. And we are bringing in a motivational speaker that we heard in Tallahassee, who was Frida King. She was absolutely phenomenal. She'll be speaking to our students that night. And that morning, she'll be addressing our high school high-tech students at East Ridge and also the entire student population at Lake Mineola. And Insight Financial is sponsoring both the events on the 18th and the 19th. Top Scholar, we recognize the top 3% of our graduating class, and there are 79 students, and the students and the parents will be greeted to a luncheon on April 26th at the Community Building and recognized. The Rotary Club of the Village has awarded Take Stock $24,300 for scholarship purchases for next year. Ladies for Education is May 4th at Continental Country Club, and the Retirement Dinner is May 17th. And on May 15th, we're going to have a reception and a dedication of the Tammy Ross Durkins Teaching and Learning Center at Leesburg High School. And the Education Foundation Normal Board Meeting for April will be replaced with a strategic planning session on April 25th from 9:00 to 4:00 at Rogers Park Building in Leesburg. We are bringing in Consultant David Moore, and the focus will be aligning the district and foundation efforts to attract larger funders and to make more of a meaningful impact. Are there any questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
I have nothing to reply to.
Okay. All right, Superintendent, we are at our consent agenda.
I recommend approval of Consent Agenda Items 6.01 to 8.04, 9.01 to 10.07.
Hey, you've heard the recommendation.
Second.
The student reports. I thought I heard that, too, but...
8.01.
8.01.
I recommend approval of Consent Agenda Items 8.01 to 8.04 and 9.01 to 10.07.
Okay, now you've heard the recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Pliss, Mr. Dodd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right, we will start with Mr. Yocum. You'd like to come and speak to 8.05 and 8.06.
Yes, and both of those, I'd like to ask maybe staff to talk a little bit about this and explain it. I was surprised that these were buried in the consent agenda. The first one is Item 8.05, which was an audit. Mr. Mock did a great job. I think that, one, he ought to get a little bit of time to get some kudos for this, and also, I do realize this contract is from before the current administration, it's from 2011. I happened to be at that meeting when that was passed, and after reading all of Mr. Mock's comments, I can say that we really have an indicator here of how school districts need to practice better management of contracts and projects. And the, because I think he did a great job, I'd like maybe him to just kind of explain a little bit of depth to you, because without this discussion in the public and on the record, I don't even know if any of you even spent any time or discussed it. And of course, you'll tell me that you maybe did, some of you did, some of you didn't. But there's some lessons to be learned here. One is, there weren't any good project management practices here, and is this also happening in other areas in contracts? Okay? Because they've had some major blunders in construction contracts going back even before then. And it could be staffing, funding, and everything else, but this gives you a clear idea of the cost of not having good management over things like this. There was no response. Mr. Mock made a recommendation, and there was no response. There's no response from management, and of course, again, the new administration, I don't think, maybe I wish that you had the answer to this, but he did recommend that you drop that, and there was nothing here and not on your agenda to follow up on his recommendation, which is, is it going to be dropped? Because it doesn't sound like there's any merit to continuing it. Now, that brings up the second point related to audits, well, third. Second one is, this also indicates another reason, which I repeat often, is you need a second auditor. You know, there's a lot of things there, and the one reason is because HB 1279, and maybe the attorney now is familiar with that, School District Accountability. Four years ago, I sat down with Larry Metz. I talked to him about the restrictions that existed on the district auditor, where he was not allowed to do performance audits. And I've been in meetings where the attorneys, folks, did say that, "No, you can't do performance audit. It says right here in the statute, you can only do financial audits." And what I'm saying is now HB 1279 passed and approved by Governor Scott gives them full authority for doing performance audits, and it says that you, the board, are supposed to provide direction. It's right here, page 12 and 13, and I checked, I verified, it was passed through Representative Sullivan, but his wording was in like three different bills. Every year, we have tried to get it passed.
You also were going to speak to 8.06, correct?
Yes, I wanted to speak about 8.06 also.
I'll give you one more minute, and we'll start with a timer for a minute to go to 8.06.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yocum.
Item 8.06, only, my only comment is, this is for using a RFP from another county, Lee County, to buy about $2 million worth of Dell Chromebooks. I don't have a problem with that, except that the only paperwork in here in the attachments was the agreement from Lee County, and the vendor is like three or four hours away from here. There was nothing in there saying that what the local staff is going to do about making sure that they have a local vendor here and meet all those other conditions, and I don't know whether that's planned or not, because there was nothing that said that. It just included those as attachments. And maybe your IT head can talk about that, and just so that we know what's going to happen on that, or do we just have this piece of paper from Lee County, and then somebody, again, has a contract and doesn't know how to follow it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yocum. Do you want Mr. Mock to come up and speak to Mr. Yocum?
In regards to the comments regarding the third-party contract audit, yes, that contract has been discontinued, so we will not be continuing with that. Mr. Mock did review that audit. He and I spent some time going over it. He did an outstanding job, as he always does. And one of the things that I felt, because normally these are workshopped, is that this audit was reflective of an old contract, old procedures, before I was here and before most of this board was here. And so I felt like a lot of the recommendations, although we reviewed them, we knew that we have new procurement process in place, we have new procedures in place, and I can assure you that we have better management of these contracts as a result of some of those changes. We do have a new leader in procurement, who is leading the charge to ensure that these processes and procedures are being followed in a more effective and efficient manner. And so I feel as though we are good there, and know that his feedback was used as we guided this process forward. In regards to 8.06, I know that I was going to pull this to discussion, and so was Dr. Burns. I heard her say that, and you beat her to it. So I do have Mr. Weeks coming this evening to talk a little bit about this. The reason why this item is on the agenda prior to the workshop is we had this item scheduled as a workshop item on the April 2nd, and due to the active shooter training that the board was able to be involved in, we've now had to move that workshop to April 30th. So typically, we do the workshop on an item such as this and then bring it to the board for a vote. So now the item is on the agenda prior to the workshop item, because if we let the time lapse, we've used up the time from the last, this is an open contract, so it says not to exceed a certain amount. Well, our schools have been very proactive, and our digital classrooms are taking off great things happening in that arena, and so our schools have been purchasing with their own dollars, their internal funds, a good bit of Chromebooks, and so we've maxed out on that. And we don't want that contract to lapse, because if so, until the next workshop, we've got about a 25-day delay, and we've got schools with money, such as AP dollars, that they like to spend, and do so before the, there's a time factor there. So I've asked Mr. Weeks to come and just give us a brief overview of what he was going to share at the workshop before the board actually presents or takes a vote on this item. Then he's going to come back on April 30th and do a full presentation on our digital classrooms and exactly what these Chromebooks are being used for. So, Mr. Weeks?
I want to make sure I got here at the right time. So, a couple of things about the Chromebook project that have been kind of really interesting. It's interesting when you have a culture that's really hungry for an affordable student device, one that is easy to start. And if you remember, this project originally started as 300 Chromebooks that we had purchased for digital discovery classrooms, AP Human Geography classrooms across the district, and that project went off well. Teachers are great people, because when something works well, they tell their teachers, and so the word started to spread very quickly. And so what we did is, is that we brought another thing to you, where we basically said that we were going to go ahead and allow it to 300,000. At first, like, it's almost impossible to predict, because we weren't sure, whenever we started to first pitch these devices, would it be like, I don't know, would it we started to first pitch these devices, would it be like, I don't know, would it be maybe like they 100 are bought, 1,000 are bought? And so that $300,000 that we originally allotted literally went, we went and pitched it to the principals, I think, the week before Christmas break. And so there wasn't a whole lot going on there. And then we came back in January, and we started to see the POs kind of trickle in at first. And then the first ones came to the schools, they were delivered to the schools, and they were so happy that they could take the things out of the box, and they just worked, that the orders started to accelerate at a pretty rapid rate, as you can imagine. So we eclipsed that $300,000 a little bit faster than even I thought we would. I've seen this movement happen in similar districts. I thought I had a good handle on it, and every time, it quickens a little bit. And that's exactly what had happened at this particular point, which is kind of neat. So one of the things that we looked at is, is that as we were getting close to that threshold, as purchasing was letting us know what was going on, just to give you some numbers, in July of 2017, we had four Chromebooks. And they were basically prototypes or pilots that we had in the back of IS to start trying to, or IT, to start trying to figure out how they would work. Those 300 we bought, and those were delivered in October, seems like ancient history at this particular point, in a way, when you start seeing these thousands. And these are drop shipped directly to the schools. So like, we don't sometimes, even though we're seeing the POs and we're seeing the transactions happening, it's not like we're seeing 3,000 or 2,000 boxes or whatever show up. And then all of a sudden, we get a call, we go ahead and sign that 300,000, we get that call, and we've already hit that. And so today, it was kind of funny, because even though it took us maybe, I would say, 12, 13 weeks to get to 300,000 Chromebooks, and I will say this, the part that kind of thrills me about this is that we're not actually, as far as the district seeding, big chunks of money into this, like in the Digital Classroom Plan money, this is not where it's coming from. It's almost like a grassroots effort at the schools to find money. And some of the ways that, I'll give you a great example, a story that I sort of shout out to all the time, Windy Hill Middle School went to Donors Choose, they worked in collaboration with us to make sure we got the right model and everything, got 150 Chromebooks on their own. And so what I'm saying is, is that in a weird kind of way, this is what sort of success looks like. We got a hit on our hands, and schools wanted to purchase more. Just today, Dr. Wheeler and I were kind of kidding, but we weren't laughing as much as you might think we were, because when we started to look, he had to approve POs, as he's part of the approval chain. And we had just today, and I think he had checked it on Thursday or so, just today, because people are trying to spend that money, $73,000 worth of Chromebooks that schools were attempting to purchase today. And so every time we pop open something known as the Google Management Console, where it keeps track of how many devices that we have, we're just amazed, because they'll come in there before they actually show up, and we just see the number go and go and go. I think it's a very, very healthy thing. However, it did also, once you have that type of success, you need to make sure that whatever is going on, that it doesn't come to a quick stop. And so part of the reason why we had wanted to ensure that this agenda item continued forward, even though our intent was to go to the workshop with a more comprehensive plan, which I'm sure I will expose to everybody in my type of painstaking detail or so, because I like getting into those, into every little aspect of it. I think the part to me that was neat is, is that we did feel the need to continue it because we did have so many in the pipeline. And I do know that there are other people out there, and if we were to take a count right now of just the schools, district departments, and everybody who seems to be jumping on this, I wouldn't be surprised if by July, by honestly, maybe June, if we didn't hit close to 5,000 Chromebooks. Just to give you an idea, we have a fleet of student devices previously of about 18,000. And one of the things that's exciting about it is, is if you take just the 2,300 Chromebooks or so, then we are probably anywhere from, what, an eighth to a tenth of the way of replenishing the student fleet in a matter of 12 weeks, which I think is a pretty exciting project. We have a lot of challenges in front of us as far as making sure that these things structurally fit the need. And we have a comprehensive four-year instructional technology roadmap that we'll be bringing to you that includes what applications we're going to be using, how we think Google helps support the instructional vision of Dr. Weiskopf in this Carnegie, and then, more importantly, what the budget would actually look like if we do a more extended rollout, if we look at rolling this out heavily into high schools, middle schools and such, and what that sequence would be. So I guess at this point, I'll just ask, answer any questions anybody might have.
Dr. Burns.
Well, the question that I asked, one of them, was, is this, are these... Are these all going to one school? Or are these, are we ruling this out region-wise or district-wise?
Yeah, so I think one of the things that we're looking at is, like, currently, they're sort of populating sort of just as they're purchased. We did basically want to maximize what our Digital Classroom Plan funding looked like for '17, '18. And so we had to get the environment right. We had to get the device right, all that infrastructure correct, or as correct as we could before we rolled it out, to make sure it was as successful as it could possibly be. So we did hold on to a lot of that money. So right now, what we are looking at is, is we're looking at the most fair and equitable approach that we can take. And to be able to roll these devices out and expand technology access as evenly across the district as possible, while also doing it in a concentrated form. Meaning, what I mean by that is, is that instructionally, you get the most kick out of it. If you give, sometimes there's models that'll be like, give every ninth grader like a Chromebook or so. Unfortunately, with that particular model, the second they hit a mixed-level class, where they may have 10th graders, 11th graders, it kind of puts that teacher in a little bit of a pinch, because all of a sudden, they can't create a digital lesson that only includes the ninth graders. And so we're trying to consider all those factors. But I do think you will see something that is evenly rolled out among the regions. I think you will see something that is basically not just even where we are trying to concentrate heavily in devices. One of the things that I'm actually excited about, I've been using for the last couple of days, is this is a, you may be familiar with this, this is about a three, maybe three-and-a-half-year-old HP Stream. It's an older device, and it was a more affordable laptop. But as you can imagine, more affordable laptops, especially sometimes with the Windows variety, have a tendency to get slow with updates. Part of the way that we're going to try to actually work on rebuilding the fleet to some extent, is this particular device has been converted into a Chromebook for $25. I've been using it, right? That's cool. So, audience, if you didn't hear, that was clapping. But anyway, for you playing along at home.
From them.
Exactly.
Yes.
Yeah, even better, so. But with that said, what's neat about this is, is that it's roughly about $25, $25 or so for the Google Management License Console. If the device were to die, we could transfer it. And then it's about anywhere, depending on what model of license we go with, anywhere for maybe $13 or $14 for the life of the device, or we might even be able to go to something cheaper, which is an annual subscription. And we're doing the math to see what goes. But really, if you think about it, for the first year, we pay that $25. After that, we get $13. And what's funny about this device is, I've been using it for the last couple of days, and just because everything is so busy, if it was slow, I would be like, no thanks, or anything like that. It really has brought more life into that device. And to answer your question, I think the solution's going to be not just pouring more devices in, even though we seem to be doing that at a rapid clip, but also when I bring the Instructional Technology Roadmap to you, talking about how we're going to bring those devices that are existing out in the field and maximize every little bit of use we can out of them. And I'm going to tell you, the speed is radically, you know, radically different on these things. We think they're breathing new life into it, and it's cost-effective for the district. It does provide, one last thing I would say, is it provides a training unification for us. The good thing about it is, if we bring these devices in early, when we do move heavier in with like Chromebooks, per se, the training curve has already kind of been taken care of, because they're already acclimated to the device, if that makes sense.
So they're at 200, we're talking 5,000 devices for this allocation, right?
Well, I mean, in this particular one, I think $2 million, the idea behind that was, is that, yeah, you're probably looking at about that. I'd have to run the math again real quick. But one of the things, too, is that I do think it's going to be interesting to see how fast the district consumes that. Because really, honestly, if you would have asked me 300,000, not to make light of it, the schools were always like, we're broke. And then they did manage, like I said, when they saw something good, to find the money for this, which I think is awesome. I think, to be honest with you, their creativity speaks to that, because they're using anything they can. $2 million, I mean, I guess my question's going to be, after we introduce the retrofitting of the devices, I think that adds another variable to it. I'm not really sure, you're right, that many devices. I'm curious to see how long it takes the district to consume that, if that makes any sense.
And this money can only be used for, or at least 1.8 of it, right?
Super important part of it is that the money that we're using is not money that would be applicable, it's categorical, so it is actually slated.
Only for devices.
Mm-hmm. Or money, I guess, that maybe potentially, if they have internal accounts or some type of other thing, but not money that could be used for salaries or things of that nature. Generally, with all this is, you know, pretty pigeonholed for that.
Yeah? You good? Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Weeks.
Thank you.
You're just full of information.[1178.08][1178.08](LAUGHING). We all enjoy when you come and speak to us. Did you have something else you wanted to add?
Something else is, buddy anonymously put out to me. Is UDT, one thing that we wanted to basically kind of mention since it did come up, is UDT is based in Orlando, is kind of a local vendor of sorts, and we do use them for other purchases. And we did seek out the Lee County, the Lee County RFP, because they had done it relatively recently, and we felt like we could really leverage their size and some of the deals that they had. Because even though right now, we're not considering warranties, the warranties right now, you would have to have a failure rate of about 25% for the warranty to make sense in our model. And we're not there, to be honest with you. In my past life, I've seen like 7% to 8% break rates or so, so it just didn't seem cost-effective. But they did get a really good price on those items and other items, so we can take advantage of that, should we decide we need to change based on our experience here, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we're ready for a recommendation on 8.05.
And I'll add to Dwayne's comments. First of all, we're really excited to see, because, you know, we love seeing more about his Digital Classroom Plan and all that IT is working on. We'll see that at the workshop on April the 30th, so please mark your calendar for that date. And also, he'll unveil the, kind of the rollout plan, what that's going to look like, and we'll have more detail for you at that meeting, plus a training plan, which I think that's really has been the key to all of this, is not just giving people a device, but the training that goes along with it for our teachers and the support plan that Dwayne and his team have put together. So they're doing an outstanding job with that. So I recommend approval of, first of all, we're going back to item 8.05, the third-party contract audit.
So moved.
Second.
Great, discussion?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment, as Mr. Yocum brought out some things. I was at the meeting when this all came up with Mr. Mock. I'm the representative there. And I was very, and as Mr. Yocum has said, he does a great job, and he did. And the thing that I like about it is that he's not afraid to bring out our problems and bring them to our attention so that we can address them. And I applauded him for that at that meeting as well. But also, as the superintendent has stated, we have different management in place now. Out of what was presented in that audit, there's only one person still left on staff that was part of that, and they will be retiring soon. But we have new management in place, and I don't see that we'll have a problem of this in the future with Mr. Carr at the helm. I put a lot on him, but he does a great job. So thank you, Mr. Mock, for your work.
One of my biggest surprises from this was that here was this contract that was approved and seemed to be occurring in almost perpetuity before any of us were even on the board, that I didn't even know it existed. You know, I guess I find out about these as they come forward for us to approve. Are there other things hanging out there that were approved so long ago that I don't know about? That I should know about? I don't know.
I know my audit committee member brought this one to me like months and months and things.
Yeah, it was a while back.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
But I have to wonder if there are any other contracts from a former administration that we don't even know about, because they're not up for renewal yet. Worth looking into, I guess.
I think so.[1391.22][1391.22](LAUGHING). All right.
Any other discussion?
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, we are on 8.06.
I recommend approval of 8.06, the procurement of Chromebooks.
So moved.
Second.
No, second for Mr. Mathias. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right, we are on the superintendent's report.
First, I'd like to, you know that Mary Lynn Mulligan, she is a record specialist in ESE Department. We sent a letter of condolences to her on the loss of her husband, Walter Mulligan, so please keep her and your family in their, in your thoughts and prayers. A couple of updates. Last week, we had the first meeting of our Student Advisory Committee, talking about school safety. And I can tell you, it was one of the most enjoyable two hours that I have spent in a very long time. We, Dr. Weiskopf helped me facilitate that conversation, and members of the staff came in and helped to facilitate as well, and just listened to the students. It was the most respectful group of students. We were supposed to meet for an hour and a half. Hour and a half in, they wanted to continue the discussion because they weren't done with the work that they had wanted to accomplish that day. They established three things that they're going to be focusing. One, they wanted to capture the student voice from, so they worked that afternoon on a survey that's going to go out to all of the students at their schools that the students created. They actually generated the questions. And Mr. Weeks was there, is going to work with us on rolling that survey out to the students, and so that will be happening in the next day or two. We're going to come back together, and they're going to analyze the results of that survey and have some discussions and formulate kind of their opinions or some recommendations for our school safety plan that they're going to bring. And then they're going to come to either a workshop or a board meeting, depending on how this plays out. They're generating all of this information, so whatever they decide that they want to do. And they're going to present that to you as a board and provide the student voice recommendation from their perspective. So I tell you that it's a very thoughtful group, a very knowledgeable group, who came not bringing their opinions, but there as a voice of all students regardless of their opinions on these matters. I can tell you, they spent the majority of their time talking about the mental health and how to best execute the dollars that the state gave us for mental health. And that's a huge concern of theirs, as it is of ours. And so it was interesting to see that the majority of their questions really center around the idea of mental health and how to provide more supports for our students. So their survey's going out, and we'll bring you those results soon. Another thing I wanted to mention, I always talk about, one of the best things about Lake County is its community partnerships. And recently, at Cypress Ridge Elementary, they, you may have seen in the paper, they have a brilliant, brand-new playground. And that really is just another example of how this community comes together when there's a need, and the partnerships that form to bring the dollars and the necessary resources to open that playground for them over at Cypress Ridge. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to all those who participated in that, as well as at Sawgrass Bay Elementary School, where they have the Buddy Bench Project. You might have seen that in the paper as well. Another project, if you're not familiar with that, where they're putting these buddy benches in. If there's a student who feels as though they just need someone to talk to, there's a place where they can go and sit, and other students acknowledge the fact that they're sitting there, and go over and engage them in conversation. We're expanding those. We have them at Triangle Elementary, Tavarius Elementary, and at Round Lake Charter, and now at Sawgrass Bay. And we're hoping that that trend continues and that we can have one of these benches at every one of our schools in the near future. Just one brief announcement, that our first open enrollment window closes on April the 30th as part of our school choice efforts. This was open to all Lake County students and parents who are interested in enrolling their child at another school, other than the one that they are zoned for. We do that purposely to give them the first dibs on some of the open seats at any of our schools. We started accepting applications from residents of Lake County on February the 1st, and will continue to April 30th. And then we'll open up a second enrollment window in June for all inside and outside of Lake County, folks interested in coming to our fabulous schools. And then lastly, I'll just remind you that Wednesday evening, April the 11th, is our community viewing of the documentary called "The Ripple Effect" about suicide, but also about healing and hope from such a tragedy. Thanks to the very generous donation of Board Member Mathias and the Education Foundation, we have sold out three theaters. So we're really excited about gathering with students and teachers and staff and parents and everyone from across the community on Wednesday evening at 7:30 at the AMC Theater. It is sold out, so we're hoping, though, as we'll go through this first round, and then hopefully be able to book more engagements in the future as the community interest continues to grow in this topic. And we do have a workshop scheduled for the 16th, that's next Monday, at our regular time at 9:30. We'll be bringing to you the changes to the staffing plan at that meeting. meeting, so, and that's all.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Mathias?
I first want to thank Ms. Stevens, amazing presentation, and Ms. Stokes, great job, Mrs. Stokes. Great job, and best wishes. Probably one of the most exciting things we did as a, as a board was to attend the Sheriff's Department Active Shooter Training, which presented a complete shift in the paradigm of how we deal with the protocol of active shooter, and I think that we'll be speaking about that later. Today, someone said, well, y'all were there for a long time, Stuart, you can attest to this, four hours, and I said, well, Lieutenant McDuffie, he started at sixty-one A.D., so that takes you a little while to get to two thousand and eighteen. So I think it can be shortened up. Tomorrow is the Taste of Lake in Leesburg, and it starts at five thirty, and there's fifteen restaurants that we feature, just sort of, I'm, the presenting sponsors just thought I'd put that plug in. Last night, I attended the first, and saw for the first time, the hard work that the Eustace High School students are doing in their videography department, and they are part of the Square Squad, is that right, Stuart? I think they call it the Square Squad, and what they're doing is, is they are chronicling, they are chronicling the change, or the evolution of Lake Square Mall, it's Viaport now, it's going back to Lake Square Mall, and those young men and women, you would think they were like seasoned professional actors, so it was very well done, and that's all I got.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Burns?
So we all, you know, did the Active Shooter Training, which I think we'll discuss later. I went to the Central Florida School Board Coalition meeting this, today. Listening to people from the Florida DOE is a little bit like listening to nails on chalkboard, so I didn't have tomatoes to throw, but the Executive Vice Chancellor of K-12 Public Schools was there, he actually was a very nice man, his name was Jacob Olivia. One of the things that was made clear was that we need to, we need to, we need to quantify how our PERT rates without the PERT test. Right now, students who don't, do not pass Algebra I have the option of taking the PERT test, so that they can graduate, and that option is going away as of August first. And many districts have actually said, this is going to cause us to have four percent less, or ten percent less graduating students. This, this is a big impact for us, so there is going to supposedly, it's, that there will be Concordan scores for the SAT and ACT, but they are college and career-ready scores, or, sorry, they are college-ready scores, not career-ready scores. So, since not all of our children go to college, they're not necessarily the scores that we would want, and the window for public comments closes May twelfth, not that I think that they'll listen to us, but we could try. I have this from some county, I don't know who, so I can, I'll give this to Natalie, and she can give this to you. I'm trying to think, the PERT rates, there was a lot of, if I get his, his presentation, I'll email it to the superintendent, who can email it out. It was full of a lot of data, a lot of which was suspect, in my opinion, and so therefore his conclusions were pretty suspect, with, you know, so what can I say? Trying to think of anything else that, and then that we covered a lot of the new legislation with SROs and DCF, the public safety commissions that have to be formed, the office of, there's an office of state schools at the DOE that's going to be formed. If, judges now must notify us if a child has some sort of, is referred for mental health counseling, and we must notify somebody, I don't know, and then there'll be threat assessment teams at the high schools. So those are the notes that I tried to scribble down as fast as I could. Beyond that, I don't know if it's fair, fair to say that I went to the fair this weekend, but I did want to congratulate, I, I saw the exhibits for Leesburg High, Tavarius High School, FFA, and Altoona, and Spring Creek, 4H, and I was, you know, it was super fun to just, I like to see, I like, I have, we, we have chickens and cats, and a ridiculous amount of animals, so it was fun for me to see animals, and I enjoyed that our kids are getting that part of their education. Oh, I also wanted to complain, because this bothers me every single year, that I think it's great that our kids are out there trying to earn money for another organization, the American Heart Association, but I think it's a massive waste of money to give that money that they earn away to the American Heart Association, when they could be earning money for their own schools, which forty thousand dollars is a lot that could go towards things in Lake County, and I think we're a good charitable organization as well. So, I just wanted to say that. Is, is that a district mandate?
It is not a district mandate, the schools participate as they choose.
Okay, so, maybe next year, they could choose differently, and use their money more wisely. And then, I wanted to wish everyone who enjoyed it, or participated, a happy Easter, or a happy Passover.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Burns. Mr. Dobbs?
I'd like to, of course, share my thanks to Lake County Sheriff's Office for indulging us in the Active Shooter Training, boy, for me, I think the scenarios that we went through were probably the most enlightening, and I'll, I'll tell you that, when you run through those scenarios, you find out who your real friends are. I'm just going to put this out there, because of Christie Burns, I got shot. I will not forget that. Oh, boy, I tell you, it, the, running through those scenarios and actually participating really gives you some good perspectives on, on how to update and evolve our protocols, as you, you learned some things, so I'm really looking forward to the dialogue the district will, will have on that. One of the other topics that I think is, that has been hitting my radar as of late, has, has been the topic of buses. I've, I've heard from a number of parents recently, and from my own personal experience, I've, it feels like just about every other day, I'm getting a call-out from my daughter's school, indicating that buses will be forty-five or sixty minutes late, and middle school already gets out so late by the time they get home, sixty minutes, on top of that, the day's over. And I, I recognize that we've got some, some challenges with this, and perhaps some of those are best solved through collective bargaining, when we start talking about salaries and trainings and whatnot, but having some dialogue and conversation about how we recruit and retain bus drivers has got to be a, a big one for us, and I, I promised a parent who called me on Friday afternoon, that I'd share her, her experience with the board. She's got a middle schooler who, based on having routes doubled up, is now sitting three to a seat, and I told her that I wouldn't want to sit next to one middle schooler at the end of the day, let alone two other middle school boys. It can't be a pleasant experience. So, so I know that our, our students and our parents are feeling the struggle. When we talk about the buses being the first impression to start the day for these kids, and being the last impression of the day of Lake County schools, we, we certainly have some great responsibilities to deliver a very customer-service friendly experience, and I know that we've got some challenges there with just the bus driver shortage. So, not that there's an easy solution, but, but I, I've told these parents, I would, I'd pass along the comments to you all, and, and in response to Mrs. Staub, is that right? Staub? Staub? I, I'd love to hear the, the follow-up on the weighted grades. I can tell you, from my own experience as, as a parent, with a lot of kids, so I've, I've seen a lot of different styles of grading come through, sometimes the weighting doesn't make any sense at all, and, and I don't know that teachers necessarily always understand the impact of that, particularly when, when you, when you weight some category very heavily, let's say fifty or sixty percent, it's true, and then you only have one or two assignments there, despite having thirty assignments overall in the grading period, but that one does carry, boom, that just dictated your entire grade for the, for the nine weeks. I remember in college, certainly, I'd, I'd go to some classes, and we'd have two grades, right? The midterm and the final, and those, that was, that was your grade, but when you're talking about elementary schoolers, I think there's a little bit of a distinction to make between that, particularly when the kid doesn't understand how the, how the weighting works. I just don't know how many first graders understand that concept. So, anyway, I've got, I've got a lot of personal experience on that, if y'all want to chat some more on, on weighting of grades, I'd be happy to share. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Okay, Steve, start. All right. First of all, Bailey, congratulations for being here, and I, I seem to visit that school quite a bit, especially at the softball field, so I, I know quite a bit about that area there, and, and then also, our rookie teacher, congratulations. When we went to her classroom, she was very busy doing what she does, and teaching, and the students were like, what's going on, you know, and it was just wonderful, being able to come in on that. Also, same thing about the Active Shooter, I will say that Mr. Mathias and Chad and Emily, they, they gave their, themselves up, so that the superintendent and I wouldn't be shot. Actually, we did a, a good job of hiding, is what we did. But, but yes, it was a wonderful event, eye-opener, and with the moms, I understand exactly what you're talking about, and even tonight, we've received all of these cards in, in response to what you're speaking to, so we're, we're taking all this into our thoughts of what we're going to do. And, and I will say, nobody has made a decision yet here. We get a lot of emails that says, hey, I hear you're going to do this, or you're, you've already involved in this. We have not made any decision which way we're going yet, so just want to make sure everybody's clear about that. Another thing I have is, Tavarius Middle School Friday had a first responders' day, and all the students and faculty and staff there at, at Tavarius Middle School was able to come out. They had FBI, I didn't see CIA or Secret Service, but I did see the Sheriff's Department, the FBI, FWC, there was so many others that were there from departments around, that these kids were able to go out and, and be able to visualize and see what all these other law enforcement agencies have out there, and what they're able to do, and it was just a wonderful time. And all that was done by one of the candidates that's up for the Night of the Stars, and that's Officer Finland, he put all that together, and I applaud him for that, he did a great job. That's it.
Oh, okay, that was abrupt. We could, all right, about average. I wanted to also thank Mrs. Stokes and Ms. Stevens, who, who I have had the opportunity to hear you sing, and your voice is lovely, so we, we, I was kind of hoping you might sing a little bit during, I'm just, I'm just kidding. Anyway, yeah, as we leave, that's right, you can maybe dismiss the media. Perfect. It is lovely, so we appreciate you guys being here and taking your time to represent us well tonight. I had the opportunity to attend the Kiwanis Prayer Breakfast for this side of the region, and I will say that Pastor Brooks did an amazing job praying for this community, and for the students, and just giving us an enlightening message, but it was, it was nice to have all of the community present, and we did pray for our students and our, and our teachers, and our parents, so it was very, very nice. Last Tuesday night, asked a two elementary teachers, Kelly Goring and Lori Westfall, hosted our UCF graduates, our first to third-year graduates, and our interns, and went all over Donors Choose, and I don't see Mr. Weeks back there anymore, but they are amazing in regards to raising money, the amount of money that they raise for their own classrooms and for other teachers, because Ms. Goring actually has a page now, where if you want to get a project funded, you can go onto her page, and she helps other people get funded now. So we have a, a huge network here in Lake County of teachers that are very proactive about getting their classrooms funded, and her classroom is amazing, she has tons of Dash robots and iPads, and, and it's, it's just beautiful, so we just wanted to tell them thank you for hosting our teachers, Lake County teachers. The high-impact teachers that were here tonight from Region One, I just wanted to thank them again, I have the opportunity to know a lot of them personally, and they are wonderful, wonderful people. My very own children have had a couple of them, one in the audience right over there, who I, I'm telling you guys, any day of the weekend, twice on Sunday, I would put any of your children in her classroom, and they would come out just better and brighter, so thank you for what you guys do for our children. Umatilla Middle School Band received straight superiors this weekend, which is a, which is an amazing accomplishment, we just want to say congratulations to them, and I also had the opportunity to go to the Amazing Race for Charity this weekend, and there were so many of our teachers, and our students, and our administrators that participated in that race, and like Ms. Cullen said earlier, that a lot of the proceeds from that race will go to our educational foundation, so we also had a stop on the race that used to elementary school, where the racers actually had, they were told in advance that this challenge would, would provide school supplies, so they had to bring that with them, and they filled buckets of school supplies for Eustace Elementary School. They also, this one, I thought was clever, too, so if you haven't done the Amazing Race for Charity, I'm going to plug it, because it does give back to charities that they, they pick, and a lot of them are education-related, but they actually had the racers, that you could pay five dollars to get out of this challenge, or you could eat dog food, so they raised money for the Humane Society on that one. So lots of really fun things, the registration for next year is already open, and it is a really, really fun thing to do. I know I saw Umatilla Elementary School Assistant Principal with her husband and her two kids, and they were racing against each other, so you can race your kids, you can race with your kids, you can race your students. A couple of our Eustace High School students finished second in the student category, so we were very well represented, and that's going to come back directly to Lake County to give us some more fun, so we appreciate the opportunity to do that, sign up for the Amazing Race for Charity, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.